Well, good evening. Each year. Each year, the Normal Police Department presents the Officer of the Year Award to the individual who demonstrates a sustained performance in all areas of professional policing, who demonstrates outstanding service to the community, and also who embodies the mission and core values of Normal Police Department. Officer Corey Phillips has been with the Police Department for two and a half years, and already during that time, he has distinguished himself by his strong work ethic. Officer Phillips was nominated for the 2021 Award because of his proactive policing during while working the three to eleven shift and the eleven to seven shift, also for his interview skills while in multiple cases eliciting critical information that resulted in felony arrests in multiple instances. Also, Officer Phillips was one of the first officers that responded to the active shooter incident that happened at the Landings Trailer Mobile Home Park back on August 30th. Officer Phillips was was quick to render aid to victims there, and he also performed his duties admirably while on the face of great danger and personal risk to his own safety. Officer Phillips is an outstanding representative of the Normal Police Department, and tonight it is my honor to present him with the 2021 Normal Police Department Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations.
You don't have an extra pen, do you?
That guy right there is my favorite.
Thank you.
Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, March 7, 2022. Please call to roll. Oh, excuse me, I'm backing up here. Call to order a public hearing on the proposed annual budget for the town of Normal fiscal year 2022-2023. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kous.
Here.
Ms. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on the proposed annual budget for the town of Normal fiscal year 2022-2023? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the proposed annual budget for the town of Normal fiscal year 2022-2023? And third and final time, is there anyone here wishing to speak on the public hearing on the proposed annual budget for the town of Normal fiscal year 2022-2023? Motion for adjournment, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Please call to roll.
Ms. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye. Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for March 7, 2022. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kous.
Here.
Ms. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comment tonight. We'll go to the omnibus agenda, items that are considered routine and will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord.
I'd like to pull items C as in Charles and D as in David.
Thank you. Move approval. Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Didn't think we were going to have an omnibus there for a second. Items on the omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the public hearing of February 21, 2022, and approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of February 21, 2022, and a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of March 2, 2022. Please call to roll.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye. The ordinance, those items are approved. Item C is an ordinance authorizing the annual publication of a zoning map. Mr. Nord.
I saw move.
Second.
Mr. Nord.
Thank you. This map, what triggers it to be updated?
Primarily, the zoning map is updated when we zone property or make zoning changes, and then it's published, we go through this publication process once a year.
Okay, yeah, the write-up says that this is used for zoning and land use regulations. There's a sanitary sewer tap-on map that staff has used for zoning issues and fees. When is that updated? Because we learned it was a number of years old.
The, I think we've covered this many times, the sanitary sewer tap-on map is updated when council modifies the sanitary sewer tap-on districts.
Okay, but is it current and up to date?
Point of order, Mayor. We're talking about something completely different than the agenda item.
What's your point of order? I'm sorry.
We're off topic.
Thank you. I would agree we're off topic on that.
Okay, then I would like to make an amendment that any zoning-related or land-use maps get updated at the same time we do the zoning map. If it's got to do with the zoning and land use, then all maps should be updated.
I'm sorry, did you say you wanted an amendment?
I would like to make a motion to add that.
Mr. Day, I don't think we can do that tonight, can we?
We can't make a motion to add that associated maps are updated as well.
Under the Open Meetings Act, this was put on the agenda as an ordinance authorizing the annual publication.
Mr. Day, can you talk into your microphone further?
The agenda under the Open Meetings Act was published for an ordinance authorizing the annual publication of the zoning map. Any, any motion to amend that has to be germane to that item that was placed on the agenda, or it has to be placed on a future agenda where we can put proper notice out under the Open Meetings Act.
That shows land use and regulations.
The specific item was the annual publication of a zoning map, and I would have to agree with Mr. Day that this lays outside that. That's certainly something you can request to bring forward at the next meeting.
I've been bringing it forward for well over a year. That map has been used to, for land use, and the public has no access to the map, but staff have used it before. So.
The, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm not sure what you mean when you say the public has no access to the map.
It's not on the website under the municipal code.
The map is not in the municipal code, Mr.?
No, I guess just for clarity's sake, the sewer tap-on map that you're making represents absolutely nothing to do with zoning or land use. It's a fee map, and it's essentially an internal tool that the staff uses as a visual, where, as Ms. Reese already mentioned, that when the council actually enacts sanitary sewer tap-on areas by ordinance, which are described in writing in our municipal code, the staff uses this internal map as a resource, but it is not a land-use map.
Again, Mr. Mayor, my point of order for off-topic is still standing on the table.
Thank you. Further on this item. Please call to roll.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, the ordinance is approved. Item D is a resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year agreement with Gateway Pyrotechnics Products LLC of St. Louis, Missouri for the annual Fourth of July fireworks display. Mr. Nord.
I saw move.
Second.
Mr. Nord.
So I understand the reason why we're extending this a year. I don't have an issue with that, but a question is, we didn't spend this money last year. What happened to that money? Where did it go?
It, the money is in the general fund.
Is it, has it been allocated somewhere?
You mean reallocated to something else?
Yeah, reallocated to something else.
No, it's just in our checking account. It's in the general fund.
Okay, so there's an extra $40,000 available for whatever we want. All right, thank you.
Further on this item. Please call to roll.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor, Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, the resolution is approved. That concludes our omnibus agenda. First item of general orders tonight is a ordinance adopting the operating and capital investment budget for the town of Normal for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Ms. Reese, you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to make a few comments about the budget before you this evening. This is our general operating and capital investment budget, and I'm very proud to recommend this budget to you. We had a lengthy budget discussion and a review in January, late January, to go over this document. I want to make a few highlights. The budget itself visually looks a little bit different than it has in the past. The aesthetics are appreciated, so thank you to the communications team and the finance team and everyone who participated in this. We're trying to make it as user-friendly of a document as possible and as informative of a document as possible. We, as I mentioned, I'm very proud to present this budget to you because it does a number of things. It, it's a, it's a budget that meets our financial goals, as council has identified, our financial targets. It is a budget where we are able to invest more in capital projects than we have in many recent years, in a number of years. So that's an exciting time. This is kind of a budget that we haven't been able to present to you for quite some time. It also represents paying off a significant amount of our debt, and I know that that has been a priority for council, so very excited that this budget references and reflects our debt service and paying off our debt early, our callable bonds in June and throughout this five-year budget. It reflects additional bond payoff, and I think that's a great story. And certainly that is in keeping with the debt restructure plan that we presented to council, I believe in late 2020 or early 2021. I'm so proud of that. The other thing I want to mention is, in terms of our capital investments that are reflected in this budget, all of this council is very well aware because you've taken action recently, but what you see in this budget is the fire station two that we have waited a number of years for. We are adding some staff, but still very cautiously, like we always do when it comes to staff. And we have continued, and we're proud of this, to retain our triple-A bond rating, and that was recently reaffirmed. So this budget tool is depicting a lot of council's goals and things that have been our priorities over the years. I do want to highlight in the actual budget document, there's the first tab is called overview. The manager, my letter to you identifies a lot of the significant items in the budget. I think that's very thorough, and it could be useful to people who just want to see in just a couple of pages what some of our budget highlights are. The other thing I want to point out in terms of debt service, which is often a topic of discussion, there's a debt service tab, and there's tables in that category that reflect our bond payoffs, which is a great story. In terms of the budget document that you see today, there are some informational pages that historically have been in the back of the budget. They're now in the front. We, with some graphics, we think it's much more user-friendly and provides to our citizens and anybody who has an interest in learning more about our financial position, what our goals are, and a lot of information about the town. So overall, while I mentioned this at our budget work session in January, I do want to again highlight the town of Normal Finance Department and every department head, every department in our organization that worked very hard to present this budget to you. We're proud of it. We think it hits a number of targets that council has prioritized, and with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions as is Finance Director Mr. Hune, if council has any. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to echo Ms. Reese on this. This is a really, really strong budget and does a lot for the citizens and the community of Normal. You know, it's been a number of years since I've seen a budget like this come forward to us, from 2006, 2007, up until most recently, we have had some serious, serious issues to deal with as a community. We had a recession, we've had COVID issues. The economy took a downturn in both of those things. We were not able to do work. We stretched our budget as tightly as we could. We deferred some projects over the years, hoping for better times, and those better times are on us right now. They're starting to come, and there is work to be done out there, significant work that we can do for the citizens of the town of Normal having to do with capital expenditures, be it roads, sewer, water, parks and rec, facilities, maintenance and upgrade. Projects like this are very, very important to the day in and day out of you as the citizens of the town of Normal. Budgets are a collaborative process, and everybody doesn't get everything they want in a budget at this table, and that's why we have discussions about it. That's why we talk among ourselves about it. But overall, the fact that we're reducing debt, we're increasing our capital expenditures to benefit the citizens of the town of Normal, to me, is very, very important as we go forward as a community, and I'm excited to move this forward. Questions or comments? Mr. Nord.
A couple items on this would be, the town's, there's been some changes to the cash model for the town. We're not buying vehicles with cash anymore, even though we saved up for it. So there's been a significant amount of money freed up for that. In the write-up, it said that we were saving more money because of increased costs for vehicles. You know, I don't see how the costs would be going up if we've already saved cash to buy them outright, how we're going to a finance model.
Mr. Nord, can I just amend your question a little bit? I know you're not referring to all vehicles in the community, in the budget. You're talking about specific vehicles, I think.
I'm just talking specifically about a million-dollar fire truck and about 24 pickup trucks that we just did, so a significant number, I think. Then, another thing is, we're hiring 20-some new staff. Those are expenses that go on indefinitely. It's not a one-year expense, so that adds to this budget every year going out. A lot of the spending is going towards amenities and not towards fixing existing infrastructure. But overall, we're spending $45 million more than what we budgeted last year. That's a 39% increase in just one year. And that is, that is a lot. So I'm not in favor of this budget. That's just too much of an increase on our taxpayers. I'd rather wait and see and make sure that this, that these new dollars are coming in before we spend. Thank you.
Ms. Smith.
As a follow-up to that issue, could I get some clarification on the funding that's included in the budget that reflects dollars provided to us from American Rescue Plan and other grants that are unusual in this budget compared to the prior year?
Ms. Smith, could I ask you to get a little closer on your microphone?
Sorry. Just for clarification on the figure that Mr. Nord referenced of a 45 of a $45 million change in expenditures for this fiscal year versus the prior fiscal year, is there some explanation or can you delineate the dollars that are coming from the American Rescue Plan and other grants that are included in this budget that are outside our normal revenue streams for the Town of Normal?
Yes, I can. And probably to be safe, I'll invite Mr. Hune to come forward if we're going to, you know, kind of get into the specifics about the budget. The American Rescue Plan is reflected as a separate fund in the budget, but is incorporated in terms of our overall budget. The American Rescue Plan Fund is found on page 247 of the budget under the special revenue funds. And so you'll see the full $13 million or so in terms of revenue and expense over the years. And then the, another example of grant-funded expenses that are reflected in this budget is the Underpass Project, which of course reflects over $20 million of state and federal grants and being spent on a capital project. Mr. Hune, do you want to supplement?
Those are the two significant ones. We do have a couple of grants for capital projects that are also out there, a little smaller than that, but those are the major grant, kind of one-time money for significant capital projects.
So those two line items alone, $20 million for Underpass Grants from various sources and the $13 million from the American Rescue Plan puts us at $33 million, which would explain two-thirds of the $45 million anomaly in this year's budget compared to last.
Correct. And just correction, the ARPA money is 10.8 million.
Oh, 10.8?
We've budgeted about 9.5 in this, but we have the remaining in the budget in previous fiscal years. But you're accurate there.
Okay. And when I was asking questions during the day-long budget workshop, you had indicated that the additional staffing is factored in for this budget. But the expenses reflect an assumption that all positions would have that salary expense throughout the 12-month period upcoming. But the reality is that we haven't filled all of those positions at the beginning of the fiscal year. So there's been some effort, as accountants are wont to do, to be conservative and err on the side of making sure that the dollars are there if we find the candidate at the correct time, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that is accurate. And I will point out, and I know that we had this conversation during the budget work session as well, when we talked about staffing and the impact on our budget. Of course, council, everyone sitting at this table knows that when circumstances change or when situation dictates, we do pivot and we do eliminate positions in order to be proactive and make sure we protect our fund balances. We've done that many, many times in recent years. That practice, there's no reason to think that practice wouldn't change. However, we also, as you indicated, Ms. Smith, we budget as if we're fully staffed. That would be responsible budgeting. Right now, as I mentioned way back in January when we talked about this, I indicated, and the numbers are about the same, we, our current budget for the current year we're in reflects our staffing plan. You know, we always, we always hope to have all of our positions filled. But we are, to date, $3 million under budget in our staffing. And that reflects the difference between a budget and actual. And that's generally always the case because rarely are we fully staffed.
And to further address the issue of staffing, on page 18 of the bound report that we received, at the top of the page, it says, "Staff additions are incorporated in a number of departments due to staff reductions totaling over 60 full-time equivalent positions in 2018, 2019, and 2020, 21." So there've been significant cutbacks in staffing in the prior years. And some of the proposed staffing increases are not even restoring to that level of staffing. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we made the cutbacks when financial situation called for it. We're in a growth mode, as evidenced by the number of housing projects that have come before the council for a proven approval and continue to move forward. And in this growth mode, I don't think it's time, I think it is time for the town staff to stop trying to do more with less, but give them the opportunity to do more with the proper resources. And as to not approving the budget, I hope we're not going to set the same precedent as a previous governor of the state set by refusing to approve a budget, which meant that the legislative body, the state legislative was not able to do their primary function and give the okay for agencies to operate. And this is what we're tasked with when we vote on this budget. And there have been plenty of opportunities to bring challenges forth. And to do nothing and not approve the budget, I think is irresponsible.
Further on the item, Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. So a couple thoughts. I want to start with a comment that was made by my colleague who most recently spoke and referenced growth mode. I do think it's an important distinction that the community and the housing market, private sector, the local economy can be in growth mode. And while we, as a town, want to make sure that we are as responsive and still providing effective and efficient services to meet the needs of a growing community, that is not the same as the town as an organization itself being in growth mode internally. And that's an important distinction. And since it came up, I wanted to make sure that got highlighted. There's a lot of good in this budget. One of the things that keeps sticking out to me, though, and beyond the federal dollars from COVID, beyond the grants for infrastructure, we also have just had higher revenues beyond that that the town didn't anticipate. For one, the state and local sales tax are projected increases of 11 and 13 and a half percent in revenue. And as a result of the additional revenue, the town has an opportunity, I think, to look at the additional flexibility in our budget and compare that with the other side of the equation, which is that people around the town and around the country are facing increased cost of living. Obviously, we can't go an hour, you know, without catching some kind of story about the $4, $4 per gas. Not that specifically, but overall, the cost of living that's increased. I think having some kind of relief for taxpayers as part of this, when we have an opportunity to fiscally with the town makes sense. And that's a sticking point that I just cannot get over. But again, there's a lot of good in this budget and I don't want to take away from that. I just think that it's, there's another side of the equation that I would have liked to have seen.
I understand your point and I don't wish to belittle it tonight or get into the details of it tonight, but I would certainly like to hear from you at some later point, what programs, projects, capital projects, debt relief services that you'd like to reduce in order to accomplish what you want to do. We can have that conversation. Ms. Lorenz?
I would like to echo a lot of what Mr. Preston just said. This is technically a very sound budget in the sense of, you know, I think a couple of things that have already been mentioned. You know, we are meeting balance reserve goals. We are paying down debt early. It is good to see some additional investment in capital projects. And so all of that is good. And I do really want to underscore my gratitude to the staff and the amount of time that you all put into this. My other points have to do more with our job up here. And I think that gets to what Mr. Preston is talking about. And that is the environmental issues and frankly, threats. You know, while on one hand, we do see quite a bit of growth, thank you to our newest corporate citizen, Rivian, and the spillover effect of that. However, it is, it is our job to be in tune with what's going on in the households. And, you know, rents are going high, somewhat largely due to supply and demand matters. And, you know, obviously, gas is going up, food is going up. Everybody, I think, on this table's heard me complain about how I was picking up everything in the meat department for $10. You know, $10 ground beef, $10 bacon, $10 chicken breasts, you know. I was like, is everything in my cart? $10. So, you know, we're all feeling that. And I think that is a factor of our environment that we need, that we need to be very thoughtful about and to provide staff with our collective thoughts about that. And to the point that I think the mayor brings up to have a conversation, we do need to have a conversation. And we haven't had that conversation as a large group. We've had one-on-ones, we've had two-on-ones. I've spent a couple of hours with our city manager. I've spent a couple of hours one-on-one with the mayor. But I don't know how this, how this plays out with the rest of you. And I really, really miss our typical, our time where we've done strategic planning, where we kind of hash out these issues and come up with a collective opinion and provide the staff with the priority. And should there have been some relief built into this budget? You know, I'm reminded a lot of times, we're not exactly a not-for-profit. And I know it's hard, it is almost impossible to make an analogy of government to any sort of business profit or not-for-profit. But I am reminded of many years that I did work for a not-for-profit. And we always talked about the importance of having a margin, okay? And no margin, no mission. And so I think we do a very good job here with our balance reserves and protecting that margin. But there would be decisions that would have to be made as to whether or not to take any excess in that margin and plow it back into the organization or give, in the case of this business, give a bonus, a one-time bonus to the employees. Some of those same thoughts are running through my mind now. Do we plow all the additional revenue that we find ourselves having back into the business? Or do we build in some relief? That's a very provocative question that I think this group needs to discuss. And as far as the staffing increase, I have wrestled with this. And that was largely a big part of my conversations that I've had offline. I am concerned about our environment right now. I am concerned about inflation. I am concerned that we might see $6 gas. What if interest rates go up to, you know, 1980-style 16%? We just don't know. And I don't want to be Chicken Little here, but I think this is a very precarious time that we are in, locally, nationally, globally. And so I am not feeling comfortable with the investment required for all 20-some positions all at once. I would like to see, and again, this would be discussion that we would have as a group here, I would like to be open to other alternatives, maybe a phased-in approach. Clearly, I think there have been some cases, very strong cases, made in certain departments that are seeing an increase of activity right now. Let's respond to that. But where that line of sight is a little less direct, maybe we hold off. Those would be the kind of discussions I'd like to hear in a strategic planning session with my colleagues. So I am feeling that, well, technically, X's and O's, it's a really good budget. Strategically, I'm concerned about it. And for that reason, I've got some, some serious reservations. Thanks.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you can hear me loud enough with the mask. I'm going to try to do this as best I can. My first question, just so that it's on the record.
Ms. Cummings, you're going to have to get on that microphone. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I guess I kind of have my first question to kick this off for the record is, how long does a council member or we as a council have to respond to the budget and what we feel should be in the budget?
Well, that's a good question. I believe that I've shared, I think council here at the table knows that we start our budget preparation process in late summer, August, September. I think in the fall, I have indicated that if council has any specific requests for the budget, to let me know. And then, you know, of course, I have monthly conversations with each of you. And hopefully, council would be comfortable in sharing thoughts in those meetings if you have specific requests. And then, of course, in January, we spend a day talking about the proposed budget. And then I try to follow up with council when they raise questions during that budget process.
So there is ample time for us to lay out our grievances and to get buy-in from other council members long before 7:00 PM tonight, correct?
Well, I'll let Mayor and other council members respond to that. So I believe that I'm accessible, but that is a question for each other, not for me.
We're going to take that as a rhetorical question.
That's fine. That can be received as a rhetorical question. Because I just find it interesting that we love to wait to the last minute to say, "Now, let me tell you and pick apart what we could have addressed before this very moment." And so while there are things that could be of concern and should probably be looked at at some later time, I think to begin a conversation prior to this very moment, while cameras are rolling and recorders are recording, I think it shows that we're losing our ability to truly govern.
Point of order.
Sure.
Your conversation should be towards the merit of what we're discussing, not individual council members' motives.
I will, I will readdress. That's fine. I will readdress. While I think we have a great budget put before us considering what we are facing, I would like, and maybe this is a call to action to my colleagues, to hear. And I would like for it to actually, since we love to be transparent, to see exactly all which we would like to cut, to satisfy the other needs that people have as to what they would like to see in the budget on our going forward. And so I don't know how that happens because we only have now this moment to address that. So that is something we should certainly, I guess, have a further discussion upon, other than tonight. While many people would like to see the negative in what we're doing, there is much to celebrate. There are many communities right now who have, have been operating in a deficit and will continue to further their operation within the deficit when it comes to their budgeting time. And that is not the case for the Town of Normal. While we are looking at continuing our financial goals, which is While we are looking at continuing our financial goals, which is including maintaining a 15% in our reserves, we're looking to pay off $8 million in callable bonds. While some will cringe and make noteworthy and scare to say that we shouldn't look at staff, I think what we're being asked is to review where we are and try to meet the growing needs in the moment. And we can always go back and review. I don't think that's a hard ask. And again, if it's something where it's not fulfilling the needs and we're not meeting our services or the service expectations, I should say, of our residents, we can certainly take that moment to revisit and regroup, which is something, a part of agile thinking and a space I'm very aware of and familiar with, where we always reevaluate. We're looking at growing, you know, our capital investments. We always hear about wanting to see more capital projects being done, and here is that opportunity to do that. Also, what scares me is this conversation could have an impact on our AAA bond rating that we've held for so long. Because if we can't show that we know how to govern, it could have an impact. So, I'm concerned, again, with us waiting to this moment to share what we feel should Last but not least, I think we have a very highly educated and great staff. I am not a micromanager. And I feel like when we wait, again, to this last minute, we are micromanaging. I feel when you don't have a micromanagement attitude, you constantly, you have conversations and you lead and you kind of guide. But you allow and trust and believe that your staff has prepared the best possible budget that can be put together. In saying that, I might be different. I don't like having micromanagers, so therefore, I don't like being one. I'm trusting that when every moment that information has been shared with us, that it has allowed us the opportunity to make a sound and educate it, allow us to respond accordingly. And so, tonight, I think we do a disservice trying to pebblepick what we can out of it for our own gains or whatever may be. But I think this is a sound budget for this moment. One thing I can say, since I've sat on this council, there has never been a time where we couldn't go back and review, even though we put out five years. We do take another look as time goes on. There has even been times when we've had to make updates or changes to the budget. The great thing about a budget, it is a plan. And a lot of times, especially within the town of Normal, since I've sat on council, the actual comes out better than what was planned. And that is what I'm looking forward to.
Going by hand raises Ms. Lorenz.
I want to clarify that my sentiments expressed tonight are not last-minute.
Can you get on?
Yeah. I want to express tonight that if there was a reference or inference made that what I brought up tonight is feeling or sounding last-minute, it is not. I thought I mentioned a few moments ago that I spent a couple of hours with Ms. Reese and Mr. Hune in a fact-finding meeting shortly after our budget session. And I've had a couple of conversations with the mayor. And I think I also had one telephone conversation with Ms. Smith. Did I make it around to everybody? No. I could be better, certainly. But the sentiments that I've expressed tonight are not the first time that at least the mayor and Ms. Reese are hearing them.
Mr. Nord.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had your hand up a minute ago. You were shoving a fly away or something.
Mr. Preston.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I don't want to perseverate on this point, but I am confused by the comment, and I'm not sure where it was directed, about some of these concerns being last-minute. As was correctly noted, every year in our budgeting process, we do a budget work session that is predictable and a full day, where we go through the entire budget as a mayor and council. And for those of us that were there this year, recall that a number of these concerns were raised at that point well over a month ago and that that itself is a public meeting.
Mr. McCarthy.
All right, if I could get the microphone to work. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, staff, for the budget. I want to share my enthusiasm. There seems to be a common thread of enthusiasm, at least that seems to be some commonality tonight. I personally am very excited for this budget. And I've been excited. The budget conversations for the last few years have been the almost 180-degree opposite of what we're seeing tonight.
Mr. McCarthy, can you get?
Yep. Sorry, Mayor.
It could be just me, but...
Is this where I say what?
Yeah.
So, we're in a much different position. You know, as we've heard, this is one of the most aggressive infrastructure and capital investment budgets that I can recall since being on this council. You know, there's some very exciting one-time projects that we're seeing from some one-time revenues, which account for the vast majority of the increase in budget. If you take those one-time revenues and projects out, we aren't even seeing a 10% increase in this budget if you take those one-time revenues and one-time projects out. So, and some sorely needed capital investments for things that we haven't been able to do for a long time, like some investments in our parks that frankly have been languishing because we haven't had the resources to do. So, I'm excited for that. This budget also responds to a segment of our population that's been crying for us to do more infrastructure investment in our community. And this budget delivers on that. And I just, you know, to the point that we need to give back to the citizens, I think this does that. I want to remind everybody, and as we try to draw analogies between business and government and business and nonprofit, is that the government is the community. And so, certainly, there's a difference between business thriving in a community and government and citizens thriving. That's an excellent distinction. What we're seeing in our community, the excellent growth we're seeing here, is a rapid increase in demand for services of its government. And that rapid increase in demand for services, we only have a couple of choices. Either we respond and we increase the services by funding them with staff and money, or we let services languish. I mean, there isn't another way. And so, the demand in our community is increased permits, increased inspections, increased water and sewer and operations. These are all demands that are increasing and arguably a good problem to have for our community. We could be in the other situation, right? We could be languishing. We could not have jobs. We could not have growth and opportunities here. So, again, I view this all as positive. But these investments in capital infrastructure are for our citizens, and they are asking us for them. I do want to point out that while all this investment in capital projects is exciting and it's good to see that during this budgeting process, that we cut $1.3 million from general operations and we pushed it to fund pensions in part. And we did that, and what that did is help us minimize any potential tax increase on the property tax. And so, we took $1.3 away from staff and funding general operations. And so, this budget in part asks staff to do more with less, once again. And of course, you know, I personally am thrilled that the debt reduction plan is in place, that we're going to pay off $8.2 million. You know, I hope we do some kind of ceremonial celebration of that. I would love it if we did that. That's just me personally. And last but certainly not least, it's a AAA-rated community again. And so, it means that we're managing very, very responsibly. I don't understand what the difficulty is. I hear the discussion points, and I think they're valid conversation. And I do believe, though, that the entire community is in growth mode and that as a community, we're either going to respond or we're not. We're either going to increase staff to handle the increased demand, or we're not. And, you know, my job isn't, as I see it, my council job isn't to try to second-guess staffing. I don't know how to run a city. I've never done that. And I'm not suggesting that there's not a good conversation there. I think there is. But for me, staffing, we hire the city manager to create a staffing plan, and our job is to put some kind of boundaries and bumpers on what that is. And this is a balanced budget. I'm told when I ask about staffing that we can ford it into the future sustainably. Those are the kind of things that I'm concerned about tonight. Last but certainly not least, I want to comment on something Ms. Reese mentioned in her comments, is the budget format and presentation has noticeably improved. I mean, everything from the Table of Contents format being much easier to find stuff to the entire budget process and financial strategies and policies being moved right up front, that helps inform the public of what guides staff and council in creating and adopting a budget is right up front for everybody to see. These are our policies. These are the things that guides us. These are the plans we use to create and a budget that fantastic and awesome, right up front. Overall, it's, from my perspective, it's much clearer, much easier to access information and visually easier to navigate and find key bits of information when you're looking for them. So, I know that's a combination of Mr. Hune, your efforts and your team's efforts and the communication team, wherever Ms. Olson is, there she is. I know that's been a joint efforts, but I really appreciate you working to make the budget an even better, more accessible tool for us to use and for the public to use. Thanks.
Further? Mr. Nord.
Thank you. I do believe it is our role to question. That is what the IML tasks councilmen, trustees to do. That is our role. You know, so, we wouldn't be being good fiscal stewards if we just accepted everything and didn't, well, without question. But something that was brought up was the staffing. We haven't had the staffing for a long time. You know, they've got staffing for communications, cultural arts, you know, not for infrastructure or for helping with, well, I guess there are some folks for inspections and planning. But all these staff are not for the new construction. But the best time to pay off debt, because we've got the TIFs that are going to be expiring, and we're going to have payments to make or extend the debt out further. You know, the best time to pay down debt is when you have excess revenue. And again, since history has shown this town has survived at the staffing level we had before, you know, I just, I'm not sold on why it needs to increase now. If through the year, you need more staffing, I would be open to hearing that conversation and saying, hey, I need one or two more people, and here's why, rather than at once come to us and say, we need 22 folks. So, anyway, I do appreciate all the work that was put into it. And don't take my questioning as not appreciating the effort. Thank you.
Did you want to?
I'm prepared to make some comments. I appreciate that. In regard to staff, ordinarily, and Ms. Lorenz and I had this conversation in the past, ordinarily, when we add staff, we do it as the budget process. We notify council in January and we move forward. That's generally what's been the case. Rarely does it happen in significant numbers of staff additions during the fiscal year. It's ordinarily during the budget. As I shared with council last year, my staffing model, because I've shared with you, have been quite open for quite some time that our staffing model is not sustainable. And like every organization across the country right now, retaining staff is a challenge. And so, we're doing our best. But as I shared with you, when I shared our budget savings right now, we're not immune to some staff transitions. However, when I would give you my staffing plan last fall, I think it was pretty clear on positions that I recommended we move forward with for succession planning purposes, which I believe as a responsible manager, that's something I should be aware of and prepared for and keep this organization ready for. And then, other positions certainly were driven by demand. And I certainly respect and value council's opinion on this, which is exactly why I spoke with all of you, most of you many times. And in some positions were added last fiscal year because of the need and frankly because of the opportunity. Our CDBG program and the demands of our CDBG coronavirus funding and directing that towards rental assistance presented an opportunity to hire someone to help with that. So, you know, those opportunities came along, and we tried to take advantage of that. So, some of our positions were added already this current fiscal year. Moving forward, as I've shared with council, every time a position, just for the rest of you, I guess, to be aware, every time a position becomes vacant, whether it's through retirement, through greener pastures, that position is evaluated. And we look at it. It's never automatically filled. So, that's how this organization moves forward. So, I have the exact same goals and purposes as every one of you here at the table. My exact goal matches yours in terms of being fiscally responsible and making sure I can present to you a financial picture that we are all proud of. And so, we are always moving forward cautiously, have always been in my 30 years with the town, cautious when it comes to staff additions, very cautious when it comes to staff cuts. And rarely do we want to be reactive. We want to be proactive. So, that's generally why we're in a position today with the budget we presented to you in terms of staffing. I don't think this is any new discussion. I did, however, just want to make one point in terms of Mr. Nord, your comments about paying down debt. And I'm just going to take counsel back briefly and check, kind of check your memories and your recollection. When we presented to you our debt restructure plan, we clearly identified which callable bonds and which group of bonds we would recommend at the time and plan for paying off early. With bonds, you can't just pay off whenever you feel like it. You have to pay when they're callable. That is exactly what we're doing. And then, of course, we've had great conversations recently in situations like the fire truck and the future fire station, too, in terms of borrowing for those. And it was purely to take advantage of the market and the opportunity. And a majority of council supported that. So, again, when we talk about our debt, we have the same goals, every one of us here, in terms of being cautious, reducing our debt when we're able and when it makes sense. And we will do that. We've done that in the past, and we will do that in the future. So, I just wanted to point out that we can't just choose to pay off our debt because we may have revenue. We have to pay off our debt when they're... We have to pay off our debt when it's callable.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief. Because Ms. Reese just talked about some of it. Just to provide some clarity and the response from my colleagues, I agree that our role is questioning, certainly. I think that's an important function that we do, certainly to both find understanding and to find opportunities for what we can do on behalf of our citizens. But my point was that our role, as I see it, is to provide guidelines and boundaries for Ms. Reese to operate and staff appropriately to run the community. But our job isn't to second guess plans for staffing. That's her job. Ours is to provide a set of guidelines, try to understand how that fits. And you know, we do that all the time. And ironically, I happened to mention this, but you know, we've got a set of financial policies and strategies in the front of this book. And this is represents our guidelines and our plans for staff. If we feel that what's happening in the budget isn't working for some reason, then I believe it's up to us to start to change some of these goals, some of these targets. If we don't believe, you know, a fund balance of 20% is important, then we should change that. Or that we want to provide a level of service at a certain level, that's up to us to start to change something. Is that, but to get down into the depths of staffing plans, I'm struggling with that part of it. But I wanted to be clear that questioning is an important part and I was in no way saying that we shouldn't be. Thanks.
I'll just make a few comments to close. And some of it summarizes what you said, have all said and recognizes what you have all said. There are things in this budget that I don't care for, but not in the sense that I don't believe that we go forward with this budget. I mean, there's things that people have personal preferences and passions for that often don't get represented or do get well represented within the budget. And I will summarize what Ms. Cummings said, that this does not lock us into stone by adopting this budget. This is a budget. And so we can address this and we have in the past. We've made turns in our budgets because we've needed to and things needed to be done. I think a point that was made tonight is that we do need a strategic retreat and it's unfortunate that we did not get it before we had this meeting tonight. But staff has provided as much support as they possibly can in light of that, to explain what their thinking process is to get us to this point today. And we will have that strategic retreat. That is being scheduled for later this spring. And if there's something that's significant that comes out of that, we can make a budget adjustment. So again, I'm going back to the point that there are, there are things in this budget I think every person at this table does not like, but I'm looking at this budget as holistic. And so I'll be voting for things that maybe I think could have been done better or differently. But I would point out that a no vote on this budget is a vote against retiring $8 million worth of debt. It's a vote against bringing our fund balance to 20%. It's a vote against increasing our road work, our sewer work, our water work in the community and taking it back to 2021 levels of investment. So you know, you can't pick and choose on that. You're going to have to take it holistically or not. That's what we're doing here tonight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
No.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The budget is approved. Item eight is an ordinance amending Division seven of the municipal code having to do with water rates.
With approval? Thank you.
Second.
Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you know, following adoption of the budget, the next item here is the proposed water rate structure. We have prepared a 2% rate increase in our water rates. I just want to remind council that historically, we planned for a 2% rate, annual rate increase. The majority of our user fees support our capital investment. And as we indicated in our council report, in the last six years, we have invested $21 million into our water system. I'm very proud of that fact. I know our water director and his staff have kept very busy managing capital projects and the like. Just for a quick look backwards, we can, I can remind council that in April of 2020, council chose to delay that water rate increase because of the worldwide pandemic and its impact on our citizens. That water rate increase was delayed six months. It went into effect in October of 2021, or excuse me, 2020. And then we, council chose to not adopt a rate increase for April 2021. So it's been 18 months since we've had a rate increase. And so this action item tonight asks council to adopt a rate increase of 2% effective April 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Nord?
Are salaries of the water staff, are they included in the water rate calculation? Are they paid for out of the water fund?
Yes, Mr. Nord, all of the water, the water fund is an enterprise fund, meaning the revenues it earns pays for the expenses. So it's functions similar to a business. And so the employees that are employed in the water department, the administration area, the treatment plant and the distribution division are all funded through the revenues that come in from into the water utility.
Okay. And when the staff are doing things that are not related to providing water, is that money reimbursed back to the water fund?
Are you specifically talking about snow plowing? I mean, I just would like to get down to the, so I can answer your question.
Yeah. If the staff are out snow plowing, does the general fund reimburse the water fund for that?
I'll probably, it's probably best to answer anecdotally. Because there's, I think maybe some misunderstand or are confused by how the organization functions. We aren't in silos. Now their revenue for the water fund and the revenue for the sewer fund stay in the water fund and the sewer fund. But organizationally, we don't operate in silos. So probably anecdotally, so people can understand, when the water department has a situation, for example, a water main break, which happens a lot this time of year, when ground is shifting, occasionally, the water main is located in the roadway. So the water department responds, makes the repairs. Almost all of our repairs are done in-house by our staff, day or night, 24/7, and they make the repairs. The water department employees, however, are not concrete and asphalt experts. So another town department steps in and helps make the repairs. The water department will make the repairs. When it comes time to making a patch in the pavement, the public works department will come back and make that patch. That is how we work back and forth, in support each other. Again, we're not siloed. So water department will pay for the materials. Public works will do the work for the patch. I'm looking at Mr. Burkhardt and he's nodding. So it would, it would be probably administratively doable, but not worth our time perhaps to track the staff members in the water department that maybe went out and plowed some streets and try to charge the water department back. Because we have the system of water department's going to do some work and the streets division will come and make the pavement repairs. Does that help explain how operationally we work?
So that means that they did not get reimbursed? Is that essentially what it is? Because that was my question.
Sure, let's go with that.
Okay. Then we also this year, well, let me just get to a point. So this is from the Rural Water Association. They say that it would be appropriate to expense those items to the enterprise fund and credit the cost for those line item expenses to the city's general fund as payment for support rendered services and that that is best practice for enterprise funds.
We can absolutely, we could do that. I just, I'm pretty sure that I indicated it probably would be a little bit administratively burdensome, but you know, it's all about staff time. And we just had a long discussion and frankly, we've had multiple discussions about how many staff can I hire? And so we, things we can do, but whether or not council believes that would be an appropriate use of time, I don't know. But again, Mr. Nord, I tried to explain, it goes both ways. So we can also charge them for public works staff time as well. I'd like to believe it probably nets out.
Well, I mean, the association's got recommendations on what is recommended as best practices. Another piece is this past year, we spent $81,000 on snowplow and salt equipment for the roads. Is that money going to be reimbursed back to this water fund?
No.
Okay.
Because the, we explained that as well. I'm pretty sure that we explained that that water department plow could be used anywhere. And I'm, we had lots and lots of compliments of every piece of equipment that we had on the street this year. And again, I'm certainly proud of how that played out. So I think it makes sense. That was another example of one department helping out the other. And perhaps it comes close to netting out.
So this water fund, we're raising, this is going to raise what, around $200 and some thousand dollars, this 2% increase?
I believe it estimates just under that. I believe it's, was it $180?
Okay. So $180,000. $81,000 of that we would not be asking our residents for, or the water users for, had we have not taken that money to buy snowplows. So that I'm not in favor of. And let me just read a few things out of here to show that what I'm saying that we did is not best practices and frowned upon by someone beyond me. You know, the Rural Water Association. They say that, well, here's one. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power was denied a summary motion to increase water rates because part of the rate would be used to provide a property related service. So something unrelated.
In Los Angeles?
This was Los Angeles Department of Water. They say that enterprise fund transfers are not good public policy because they're not in the best interest of taxpayers. Also, we've got water users that are not in the town. You know, they pay extra water because the waters run out there. I assume we do. I mean, Bloomington doesn't. I know Normal's got a rate for if you're out of town, but you're connected to the water system. Do we have customers like that?
I believe at Franklin Heights, maybe? Yeah. But they pay a surcharge.
Sure. They pay a surcharge, but they don't vote in Normal, correct?
Well, they...
Because they don't live in Normal.
Correct. They're not residents of Normal.
However, they don't have any input as to who's going to sit up here at the council to look out for their interests in water fees. Now we're taking money for them, putting it into fixing our roads in town, you know, and they don't have any input in their taxation on that. You know, there's a whole litany of things why they say this is, that this is bad. One utility director privately remarked at the ever-increasing transfer to the general fund is the city has found its cash cow. Now it's going to milk this dry until the marrow is sucked out of the bones. So I am not in favor of telling residents, we're raising your water rates because that's the cost of providing water, when we all know that we don't use that money for exclusively providing water. We're telling them one thing and doing another. And that is why I cannot support this. Up until, I guess, the trust is earned back, that the money that we tell people, or the reason we're collecting money is actually used for that purpose, then you know, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to do that. Because this is an issue of public trust and accountability. Ratepayers should get what they pay for. And if this is to pay for services, that's what they should get.
Ms. Smith?
As an accountant, and I did start my career in a cost accounting department, I'm familiar with the ability to allocate cost based on use. And as Ms. Reese has pointed out, cost benefit analysis has been done to determine that it would probably be a wash to charge the public works department for their use of snowplow equipment by water department personnel and then be compensated by the public works department for the repairs in the streets to water main projects. So, and as she pointed out, since we've had this debate over staffing, if we're not willing to allocate the resources to do something of this nature, I fail to see that it's a viable or reasonable use of resources to pursue it. And in the grand scheme of things, we've been fortunate this past winter to only have had a couple of severe weather incidents that required all hands on deck with snowplows. And in the most recent example, or the most recent storm, we had a commitment from the city manager that all normal streets would be cleared at least once, have one pass in the first 24 hours. And I can tell you from sitting in the chair at my hairdresser's recently, which is a great source of communication for many people, that it was noticed that Normal did an exceptional job of clearing their streets. And I would hazard a guess that when asked whether or not there is a dispute over using 48 hours out of 8,768 hours in a year for .005 hours to dedicate water department staff to assisting with the task to accomplish a common goal, I don't think we're deceiving anybody. I think the larger issue is the water department has some capital expenditures. They have to maintain their equipment. There's a lot of front end loading in this next five-year budget for capital expenditures related to the water delivery. Those dollars coming out on the front end put a strain on the reserves in the fifth year. We've missed passing rate increases for the last 18 months. We are now looking at a 2% rate increase for this year. Most likely, it won't happen next year because it's an election year. So we're looking at, from a standpoint of the household, I believe it was how much per household, Ms. Reese? You had that in your...
I believe it's about just under $11 a year, perhaps for an average water utility user. I think it was $10.80 a year is our estimate.
And when I was in the habit of advising people on planning for their financial And when I was in the habit of advising people on planning for their financial future, and trying to drive home the point of preparing ahead of time instead of delaying, that if you spend the dollars now, if you put money aside early, it's the equivalent of putting a ping-pong ball in your pocket. It's, you notice it, it's a bit annoying, but you can live with it. The further out you push rate increases, you run to the point where you're trying to jam a basketball into that pocket to accomplish the same end goal, because you haven't gained the advantage of matching the revenue with the, the capital expenditures that are budgeted to take place at the beginning of this. I'm in favor of this rate increase.
Ms. Smith, I just have to comment on your hairdresser comment, because if the CIA were ever short of, of personnel, they should hire hairdressers. They see in no everything. Ms. Lorenz?
Okay. I don't know how to follow that up. But I want to get us past plow gate, okay? Let's go back to talking about the water department. If, if we go on with this other line of thinking, I, I see Chief Bleisner back there thinking, hmm, new revenue stream, I can start charging every department for what I do. So, anyway, won't, won't pursue that any further. Where I want to go is kind of back to the theme that we had going during the budget discussion, a point that Mr. Preston said, about relief, and a point that I was making about the uncertain times that we're in. And, you know, this was actually one of the topics that, in my two-hour-or-so fact-finding mission with Ms. Reese and, and staff on the budget, a few weeks back, that we talked about. And my notes show here that about half of the increase will go to treatment and operations, and half will go to capital. If that, in fact, is, my notes are accurate, what I'm kind of wondering, in the spirit of relief, for folks that are facing rising rents, and rising cost of food, and rising gas pump, and frankly, let's not forget all of the other things that are in our water bill. Rising water reclamation district rate, okay? That thing's going up 5% every year. So, for at least, for a five-year period, I think we're about halfway through that. We don't even get a say-so in that. That's a, that's a whole other body, Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District. So, you got to really look at that, that, that bill. It's loaded with all sorts of services. Unfortunately, it's called the water bill. So, they, they get guilty by association. Maybe we need to look at renaming it. All kidding aside, we have made alterations in the past to the increase under peculiar circumstances. Is that something we could look at? You know, maybe stepping in a 1% increase for the first 180 days? It's better than nothing. And yet, it, it's, it's going to give, at least, while it is an increase, it's not as much. And maybe, you know, make sure that it's, it's going more towards the, the treatment and operations side. Capital, you know, capital's important, for sure. I think we do have some, I think some of the ARPA funds are going towards infrastructure-related projects, so maybe we can keep going with some of the, the capital based on, on those funds. Any interest for that? I'm going to toss it out there as a, as a discussion point at this point, and maybe I'll come back for a motion if there's some interest in it. Thank you.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. This one is certainly one of those things that's tough personally for me. I would probably, could easily say that I'm probably the least earner on this whole dais. Yes, with the rising cost of gas and everything else in between, I just took on a third job. And many of you probably don't even know that, because I'm a single woman trying to survive. But at the same time, I know that I have to think of also the big picture. I have to get outside of just my fear of what will happen to me, as also not only a single person, barely making minimal, middle-class income, working three jobs, to make ends meet, paying a mortgage, paying a water bill, right here in Normal. And I have to come out of that long enough to see the big picture. I have to come out of that and think about, how do I budget the 90 cents? And to some of you, you probably wouldn't think so. You wouldn't, you, you have your thoughts and your preconceived notions, but that's real for me. As somebody who's now been divorced two years, still living on one income, and trying to maintain my life. So, before you pass judgment and say, "I sit here and have no idea and no clue," think again. I don't always make every decision just from a personal, I don't want to say personal, but emotional place. But I have to sometimes come out of myself to see the bigger picture, to see the end game, the long run. And this is one of them. How we can continue to keep the ball moving forward, because in the conversations I had, and I can't speak for anybody else, what I could end up paying if we delay this would be even greater later. And probably would put me in a position I was back in in 2008, because it probably would push me in a position to not be able to figure anything out. And it's easier for me to figure out 90 cents per month now than $90 later. And that's the reality I had to come from. So, I just had to share with you that this is real to some of us. I know I've read some, some articles and some comments about what people think, how some of us make the decisions, but this was a hard one for me. And that's why.
Further on the side, Mr. Nord?
Ms. Cummings makes a good point. If we keep allowing staff to rob from this fund, then at some point, we, we are absolutely going to have to play catch-up, and then there will be huge increases. But let's, let's keep in mind, this is an enterprise fund. I didn't define it that way. Some board before us said this was an enterprise fund. And it's, and I, an enterprise fund is a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism. It is to be kept separate. Another thing it says in here is, "Money's collected for specific public service, then redirected for unrelated purposes," should naturally become a subject of public scrutiny and debate.
Point of order, Mayor, we're getting off topic again. Policies from somebody else has nothing to do with whether or not we're increasing water rates.
I'm going to allow Mr. Nord to continue here. I think we're talking about the reason we're going to increase or not increase.
Yes. And for the accounting part that Ms. Smith talked about, it talks about how there is a GASB financial reporting standard for transferring money back and forth and keeping track of it, to keep it as an enterprise fund. And it says enterprise funds are not, it says enterprise fund transfers are not good public policy, are not in the best interest of ratepayers, our constituents. And all this comes down to, not were the streets kept clean of snow, it's, are we using this enterprise fund the way that it was set up? If we pay that money back, the issue goes away. But if we rob the money from it and we don't put it back, then we have an issue. That's what the state did to pensions. You know, we can't go down that same route. Another piece is, it says that cities and counties do have a fiduciary responsibility to run these enterprises as separate self-sustaining entities. So, I would ask the council to entertain a motion to repay back the purchase of that snowplow equipment and salt equipment.
That can't be done under this one, Mr. Nord.
Then my vote is going to be no.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in, we, we have heard for six months, five months, when did we actually order that snowplow? Four months ago? It was in the fall. Took a while. Mr. Nord, you have, you have indicated many, many times that staff has siphoned money. That's a quote from the budget work session, I believe. You just said that, what was the term you used? Basically robbed the water fund. And we sit here, and I take it every other week, every other Monday night, I take it, and I take it, and I take it. And we keep pointing out to you that your statements are wrong, inaccurate, offensive. And I'm going to say, again, you're wrong, and it's offensive. And for the public, because everyone here at the table knows what you did, but the city council, a majority of you, voted to buy a snowplow. Staff didn't steal it. We didn't twist your arms. We made the case, and a majority of council said yes. That makes sense. So, we did it. Now, you did not vote for it, but your colleagues did. So, perhaps, moving forward, you can stop accusing staff of stealing and being unethical and inappropriate. That would be appreciated on this particular issue. And we have discussed this time and time again. So, we have a couple of options. Obviously, the mayor's going to control this, but we can reconsider council's decision, and the majority of the council, of your decision, months and months ago. And we can tell the citizens, eh, we're going to take some fleet off the street, and use that snowplow only at the water plant and at our well sites, because we can. But I, I doubt council's going to support that. The other thing is, the water fund, like the sewer fund, is very well managed. It is audited annually. We hide nothing. We are proud of our enterprise funds, just like we are proud of the general fund, the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, the Library Fund, all of our funds, very well managed. Mr. Hune has an excellent team, and they are incredible professionals and know what they do. And let me tell you, Mr. Hune understands government financing, government accounting, GASB standards, like you referenced, GFOA requirements, all sorts of things. If we want to go down that path, then we better set another work session, because that's another whole conversation, and not really relevant to this particular matter. Getting back to the issue at hand, staff has recommended a water rate increase. Council knows that we invest much of those revenues into capital. Investing in the water system has been something that council members have made countless public comments about. And this is what we are trying to do moving forward. That's, that's our recommendation. It's not complicated, it's not clandestine, and it's not immoral or unethical. It's just simply, does council support having the revenue that we would like to have to invest in capital and in our water system? Thank you.
And I think that's very well said, Ms. Reese. And I think that's where our conversation should go. Let's not, let's not go into this other item again. I, I'm pretty, pretty sure I know how everybody's going to vote, so let's really keep it to that specific issue. Ms. Cummings, and then Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Lorenz.
If I can, Mayor, I do want to clarify for those who are watching, and, because I don't like words put in my mouth, I did not say that staff robbed us of anything. So, let's be very clear on that. But, sorry. But what I, I wanted to go down the road of, is if I remember correctly, when we initially talked about doing the 2% per year, it was with the understanding, and this was prior to COVID, when we first had this conversation with the council. And I think we actually voted on it, probably my first term. It was because we understood where the costs of supplies to maintain our water. We knew where that was going, the, the supplies that's being used. The other thing was, at the time, identifying replacements. And there was concern of, and I remember the conversation we had when there was one particular water main, and you brought it in, and it was on display, and we talked about some, when some instances, we don't know what we might get, or, I guess that's what it's to say, it is, we don't know what we might get until we start working on that. And we had to be in a position to be able to fix it, and not just patch it, but actually do the work, because that was the best investment. And so, I just wanted to bring that back to the forefront, as to why we were doing this prior, you know, what the thought process was prior to COVID. We did try to make changes, be in understanding of where we were, but we do need to, at some, you know, and I think this is probably the best point right now, we can, to get back on track, as it relates to those who might need relief from where we are, we can always later have those discussions and make that available. But I think in order for us to pursue what we intended to do prior to COVID, I think this is now the best timing to try to get back on track. The longer you wait, the more we prolong. And I just want to make sure I'm clear on, if, if my memory serves me correct, and what our vision was as it relates to our water and, and our water infrastructure.
Ms. Smith?
To reference some earlier points about postponing this and possibly splitting it between postponing a capital increase versus a, an operating increase, I spoke before the meeting with Mr. Yoon to get some clarity on the prop, on the timing of this rate increase. It is intended to prevent a shortfall in the later years of the forecast. And by doing it in the current year, we minimize the amount of the increase, because we are putting dollars available to address costs that we know we're incurring. The water department, in their capital planning, is in a unique situation of having to budget repairs to coincide and align with street resurfacing. And, and I'm seeing Mr. Burke shaking his head, that he's very much aware of the street projects that we have planned in these upcoming years. And so, there are more capital dollars in these next two years than we've had in the past, which would align with the increase in our street resurfacing. And mention has been made of inflation pressures. Well, the inflation pressures that our households personally are feeling also are inflicted upon the town of Normal and its operations. It does not exist in a bubble. And in a recent meeting, we saw some of the expenses for water department supplies going up. We were fortunate at... We were fortunate, I think it was just the last meeting, to approve a contract where we were locking in some cost. But that's not a guarantee that all of the operating expenses will be at a flat level compared to the prior years. So again, putting this rate increase in this year is protecting us from larger increases down the road. It's helping support higher-than-usual capital expenditures built into the budget for the next two years and anticipating the increased costs that the Water Department has already seen in their operating expenses.
Ms. Lorenz.
Okay. So I'm going to go by the notes that I took when I was meeting with staff on my questions about the budget. And, let me bring this over here. You know, I think on all of our utilities, you know, I feel that we need to make sure that we keep them, you know, up to snuff, well-funded maintenance. You know, we don't want to be a Flint, Michigan. We don't want to shortchange sewers. We don't want, you know, guardians of civilization to not work one day when I go and flush my toilet. So these things are important. We get that. I get that. No, dear me. Okay, so I took these notes. And I said, well, what if we didn't do a 2%? And the answer was, well, you could cut capital or you would reduce your target fund balance. And I said, well, what's the target fund balance? And the answer I have here, it's 20%. And I said, 20%? Ah, that's because it's a fairly small fund. About $10 million of an operation. So, in one hand, they are operating on a slim, slimmer margin. Not much margin for error, let's put it that way. And anytime something goes wrong, it's expensive. I mean, that's kind of the nature of the beast, is what I get. So, so we do need to, I get it. We do need to keep them funded. We don't want to shortchange ourselves now. We don't want to shortchange ourselves in the future. I'm trying to make a point, however, that we aren't out of the woods yet. We aren't in the same situation that we were this time, two years ago. But we've got some different things going at us that are just as historic. And, you know, inflation at a 40-year high. So, much like I was saying in the previous items vote for budget, where's the relief? Where's the relief for the households? And that wasn't in our budget. And that's where, you know, we needed to have that conversation through a strategic planning session, and maybe it will still yet happen, where we can work that into an adjustment somehow. But this fee increase is an example of where we need to find some relief. And if my next statement is in fact true, that half of it, half of the increase goes to fund capital and half goes to treatment and operations, I think that we should look at a 1% for a period of time to at least keep operations well-funded, leverage some of the capital dollars that we're getting through ARPA that will help with, you know, as part of the additional capital projects happening, and go with a 1%. And on that note, I would like to make a motion to amend the 2% to 1% for 180 days.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on that item.
Could I ask a question? Just because if this gets passed, can councilmember Lorenz please explain what happens after the 180 days? Is it gone? What do you mean a 1% for 180 days? I'm not clear on that. Go back to past rates, or what happens?
Let me think through that. I just remembered last, what I was trying to replicate was two years ago where we deferred the 2% for, I believe it was either 90 or 180 days, and then the 2% kicked in.
Right, and it stayed in place.
Right. And so I'm trying to buy-
For 1% for 180 days.
Right, so for two quarters, give people some relief to get through the end of the year. And, you know, through the summer months, and then the 2%.
Oh, so it's 1% for 180 days and then the 2%?
Just to build in some relief. Right.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that situation.
The 1% stepped in now, the 2% stepped in after 180 days.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
We can have discussion on that, but I think the amendment is crystal clear. Discussion? Mr. Nord.
To fund that difference, we had the National Fitness Campaign that was canceled.
Mr. Nord, the amendment is to reduce, Mr. Nord, the amendment is to reduce to 1% for 180 days. That is the only thing we are going to discuss in the amendment.
Sure, but I'm just trying to understand if-
Mr. Nord, that is the only thing we're going to discuss in this amendment.
Okay, then, Ms. Reese, could you please explain where some money is available that we could use to offset this motion?
I believe, if I can respond, Mr. Mayor, I believe Ms. Lorenz summed it up. Without the planned revenue, we will either reduce our fund balance target or reduce our capital expense. That was made clear.
Is there anything in the general fund?
Well, I believe you were very clear in saying that we shouldn't move money from general fund to water fund. So I suspect you're not suggesting that right now.
You must have misheard me before. I was absolutely saying we should transfer money from the general fund to the water fund to repay the money that we took from it.
We didn't take money from the water fund.
So, to buy the snowplow equipment?
The water fund bought the snowplow. The water fund paid for it, the water fund owns it.
Okay, so back to Ms. Lorenz's. Can we guarantee that the money that we're going to collect under that cannot be diverted to other purposes?
Are you asking if the revenue, should council approve a water rate increase, if the revenue will stay in the enterprise fund? Is that what you're asking?
If we can guarantee that the money has to stay within that enterprise fund for just enterprise fund purposes.
It does.
I beg to argue-
Mr. Nord, you're bringing up an issue that is not relevant to the amendment?
Well, I would like to support it, but if we can't guarantee that the money is going to stay in there, then we're just supporting an additional tax and can't guarantee it's going to stay there. That's my issue that I'm trying to seek clarification on.
Fair enough. Please call the roll on the amendment.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Cummings? Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mayor Kous?
No, the amendment fails. Back to the original issue. I'm going to call the roll on that, I think. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
No.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings? Mr. Preston?
No.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The item is approved. Item nine is a motion to initiate zoning text amendments concerning solar and wind energy facilities.
With approval?
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on this item.
Mayor, the only thing that I'll mention is that this just starts the process. Council is very familiar with how this works. Council's action tonight, if in favor of our recommendation, sends this topic to the Planning Commission for a public hearing process. And then, based, once that process concludes, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to you, and you will be tasked with making the final determination on any potential zoning text regarding solar and wind installations.
Discussion? Mr. Nord?
Is there a business, or, I guess it doesn't have to be a business, is there someone or some entity that has come to the town and asked us to look into this?
Our discussions have been reactive. There have been some entities that have inquired. And we'd rather get some zoning details in place so we're not responding on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, because this is a big thing. And man, wind and solar has been out there for a while, going on houses and things. What's the issue that we need to take this up now? What's the driving factor?
Well, the zoning code does not contain any specific regulations regarding installations for wind turbines, wind installations, solar installations in commercial and various districts. And so we believe the time is right to take this to Planning Commission so we can have appropriate zoning regulations.
Okay, because I've seen them on houses and business, and, you know, on rooftops for a long time. We've got one that came before us here earlier this year. I think you mentioned it in the write-up for a church on the east side. And we haven't seen that built yet. So a concern that I have is, I don't know that we're going to know exactly what's going on until we can see and touch what's out there. And if there's no real driving factor for this, you know, I would prefer to see us wait until we have something that we can see what a solar field looks like. Because you talk about, oh, like shadow flickering, I think it was. Yeah, shadow flicker and stuff like that. And we'll be in a better position to understand if we wait, especially if there's not a driving motive to put all this work into it right now.
That is certainly one perspective. Council may agree. Certainly, staff believes that we should act before we have to just be in a position to, a knee-jerk reaction to someone. And, you know, we certainly wouldn't want to be accused of making reactions and responding to individual requests as they come up. We'd rather have regulations in place. And my guess is, based on things that you've indicated, Mr. Nord, that you've seen them in residential areas, other communities have this. My guess is that people may have an opinion. And going through a public hearing process allows people to share their thoughts and craft what we should have in terms of zoning regulation that we believe is appropriate for this community. So certainly appreciate your perspective, but we believe that it makes sense to not wait. And who knows? Maybe when we actually get a request, it could be multiple businesses. And so it might be, you know, at one time, rather than just one at a time. So our recommendation is send us through a public hearing process. Let's hear what, how the community feels about it, and then craft our regulations.
Have we turned a business down in the past?
Mercy?
So we do have a couple of requests that have come up informally. Nothing public has been made available yet. And they've asked questions that would be addressed by this ordinance if and when it were passed. So in essence, right now, a couple of entities are on hold, waiting for us to make some sort of decision with the zoning code amendment.
Are these large-scale, or are these just like homes?
It's kind of all over the board. I mean, clearly, all of the roof-mounted panels that you've seen all over town, they exist and they've been approved as part of the meeting, the building code. The draft ordinance that we are working on, you know, spoiler alert, when it comes to the roof-mounted panels that you've seen in many different settings, those would be a permitted use, as they are in almost every community where I've researched the zoning code. So what you see out there now is permitted, basically through the building code. But it's more when people ask questions about freestanding systems that our code doesn't permit, like the ones you saw for First Presbyterian about a year and a half ago. We had, we came through the public process because we, our code doesn't address it. And we needed the public to have an opportunity to weigh in. We would prefer not to keep doing that.
Further on this item? Please, Ms. Lorenz.
May I just, isn't the county looking at this too?
The county has a pretty, a very robust ordinance in place already for freestanding wind, like the industrial-scale installations you've seen out there. I really don't know what their rules say about smaller scale, like if one person wanted to put up a smaller wind turbine. But we're doing research into that. Commercial solar, they probably, like when you're talking about big expanses of solar panels across many acres, I think the county does have regulations for that.
You know, I just see this as us keeping our code up to date with emerging technology in this case. And years ago, when I was on a planning commission, or maybe it was the Zoning Board of Appeals, one or the other, you know, I think the topic was cell tower back then, right? So, and things co-locating on cell towers. So, just like I think eventually that was written into code, here comes another technology. And so I think it's appropriate to direct staff to take a look at this. I appreciate what you're doing. Thanks.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the additional information. Yeah, in part echo is, I think this is a good proactive step for us to frankly not fall behind. Not get, the faster we run, the behinder we fall, as my mom used to say. But I think, you know, in the practical matter of what I'm hearing and knowing the Planning Commission process, this is going to give Planning Commission and the public opportunity to do this well ahead of time before, you know, we have to push, come to shove and start doing this under pressure. If I'm hearing you right, you're both nodding your heads. Yeah, so, and from what's the information given us to the packet, the scope of what they will consider is pretty robust, it looks like. And so doing this well ahead of time, rather than when we have deadline pressure of more and more projects coming, is prudent so we can get ahead of this. And as we all know, the Planning Commission back-to-council process is not a speedy one or an easy one. And so if we've got people and businesses that are interested in this, enabling a streamlined process for those who want to do wind and solar, I would think as a community, we would want to encourage that and try to help them go through the process as quickly as we can. So I'm supportive. Thanks.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to belabor, but it's, I just want to say, this is ironic, this is coming up, because before we got our council packet, maybe about a week or so ago, I sat on a call with other community leaders who were talking about this very thing. And I felt like we were behind, because I didn't know this was coming. And so, you know, they, a lot of communities are now already being proactive. And where I like to think that we could be on cutting edge of something, this isn't one of them. But I am proud that we are at least within the first grouping of those moving in that way. As we talk more about being environmentally friendly, these types of things are coming up. So I was really glad to see this, because it took away the feeling I felt in that meeting. So thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just, from a procedural standpoint, I like that this provides a level of predictability and the ability for companies in the community to plan. I like that our action tonight will send this to a public hearing and pulling in the community's voices in this, and that it removes a big level of potential subjectivity by having a clear and upfront standards from the beginning. I think it is a good thing all the way.
Okay. Mr. Nord?
Assuming that this goes through and it passes, with building code, if you live within, what is it, a mile and a half of town, you've got to follow the town building codes? Is that the distance?
No. It's just subdivision.
Subdivision?
Yeah, we don't have any extraterritorial control with the building code outside of our corporate limits, unless it's by an annexation agreement, which we're under none right now, so.
Okay, so then any of the nearby farms or residents that aren't in the town, they will not be impacted by this at all?
Not by the building code.
Well, not by whatever this code would be that-
Unless they're within our corporate limits, no.
I mean, it depends on how finely you want to slice this. But if it's an undeveloped piece of ground within a mile and a half and they develop it with, like, a solar field, they would be subject to our subdivision requirements.
But not subject to the actual solar and/or wind ordinances.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because, yeah, because my concern was just making sure those folks got invited if they were going to be subject to this somehow. All right. Thanks.
The world, the world will be invited to the, the public hearing, so.
I will be sending an invitation to the entire world.
Yeah, it'll be posted for anybody to see.
It'll be posted, it'll in the newspaper. I suspect this will probably get some media coverage because it is an interesting topic. So I would hope anyone who's paying attention will hear about it. But with any general zoning text amendment, there actually isn't anyone we send, just send a postcard to or anything. So we just hope people, we try to get the word out.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Motion is approved. Item 10 is a motion to approve reappointments to various boards, commissions, and committees.
Move, move.
Second.
Sorry.
Questions or comments on this discussion? Mr. Nord?
So these individuals that are being appointed, are they appointed to represent the public?
In the sense that the town represents the public, yes.
So they are representatives of the public?
They are representative, the town representing the public.
Okay. I'm a little confused by that. Anyway, if they are ultimately supposed to be representing the public, has the public been made aware of who these folks are?
They will be in a moment.
Okay. So the public hasn't been given an opportunity to know before this vote who these folks are that would be representing them in these different boards and commissions? You know, in Bloomington, they allow the public to know in advance. So my question is, what is, or why, why is Bloomington wrong in letting the public know in Normal right and not letting the public be involved?
Bloomington is not wrong. Bloomington has a different process. A lot of municipalities have different processes.
Okay. Since these folks are representing the public?
They're representing the town representing the public.
Okay, but they will ultimately represent the public?
No, they're representing the town representing the public. You're trying to remove the town from the process and give priority to the public running, running the boards and commissions of zoning board of appea, or not zoning board of appeals, but building code board of appeals, et cetera, et cetera.
So the town, everybody on that board represents the town?
Representing the public.
Represent the town? That is so confusing. If you're at a table, who's-
Who do you represent, Mr. Nord?
Who do I represent?
Yeah.
The citizens, the voters.
And what's your vehicle to represent to the citizens? You're a town council member.
I was elected to represent the citizens.
Right.
I was not elected to represent the town's interests. So I'm still lost in that. Why would we be appointing someone to represent the town? Or why would, why would elected officials be asked to appoint folks?
Maybe we should change these positions to elected positions.
Well, I just think that if these folks are going to represent somehow the citizens, then the citizens should be involved in the discussion. But they have no idea to even give us public comment on who these folks are or anything. So for that matter, I cannot support the folks. I'm sure there are some great people there, but if their ultimate job is to represent the citizens, the citizens have to have input in that, and they don't have input in that.
Mr. Nord, what's the first item on your agenda, or item number four on your agenda?
I've kind of questioned relevance.
What, what is the?
Well, the item says public comment.
Thank you.
The citizens don't know who the folks are. How could they possibly give public comment?
They could, they could voice that concern, couldn't they?
Well, they-
And have it, and have it in 19 years.
The citizens have elected us to represent their interests. Their interests are not being served because they don't know.
Sorry, sorry to be argumentative. I think you've made your point. Further on this item? Mr. McCarthy?
I just want to remind everybody that these are reappointments, that these have been seated board members for quite a while, and the public's had ample opportunity to ask any questions of these folks if they wanted. These names have been published for quite a long time, and they haven't been a secret. They've been out in the public for quite a long time. I just want to remind everybody that these are reappointments, not anything different. Thanks, Mayor.
Please call the roll.
Wait, do we, you need to announce the names?
Oh, yes, we do need to announce the names first.
Really?
Yeah.
Finally, the public finds out.
All right.
Blame Mr. Day for that.
All right. And I suppose that's still my job. All right. The following members have been, or with this action, the following members will be reappointed to the Building Board of Appeals. Russ Arbuckle for a term that would expire on 3/31/2026. Marty Behrens, same term. Rick Bozer, same term. Jason Kaufman, same term. Guy DeKiala, hopefully I didn't murder that too badly, for the same term. Jeff Fied for the same term. Fred Hahn for the same term. Brian Redd for the same term. Terry Sims for the same term. And Chris Turner for the same terms. The following names are, with this action, would be reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. Larry Schumacher, term expired 3/31/2026. And Christopher Nyber for the same term. The next names with this action will be appointed, reappointed to the Human Relations Commission. Benjamin Ryburn, term expiring 3/31/2026. And Shrinivas Nikelenani for the same term. For a reappointment to the Planning Commission, Mr. Andy Byers for a term that expires on 3/31/2025. For a reappointment to the Up-Ton Design Review Commission, Barbara Fuller for a term that expires on 3/31/2025. The following names with this action would be reappointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Gary Blakeney for a term that expires 3/31/2025. Keith Palmgren, same term. Tony Penn, same term. And Randy Schaub, same term.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The motion is approved. We have no public comment post-meeting here or post-agenda before taking a motion for adjournment. Are there concerns or comments? And Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make this as quick as possible. One thing I do want to just kind of clarify that came out or was mentioned tonight is, I guess my concern is, even though we haven't had strategic meeting, I, I know it's rare that I'm ever asked as a council member from my other council members to say, hey, here's my thoughts on X, Y, and Z. Can I, can I get your support? Or can we talk about it? Can we come to some medium? I feel like the only time I'm pulled in, and maybe it's personal to me, and I don't know why people don't feel like they can call me or email me or text me, but it's only when we're here, whether it is for one meeting or another. And so I just would like to see us, when we have concerns, to have those additional conversations ahead of those times. Another thing is, I want to thank those who have served on, served on boards and commissions because I know as being a past board member, it is a voluntary experience and you, you give a lot of your time, your energy, your, your talents, and in some cases, even possibly your money to help further the cause and the mission of our communities. And last but not least, while Mr. Willie Brown was not a direct resident of the town of Normal, his impact crossed Division Street. And so I cannot let this night go by without acknowledging his impact to this community and what a great loss it has been. He's devoted so much of his life, not only to Bloomington but to Normal, and even his resources, which has impacted many of the things we do in Normal, and so many of the organizations that reached out to our residents within this community. And so it's with a saddened, broken, sincere heart that I send condolences to his family, his closest friends. But his legacy will continue to live, but the lives he touched and the impact he has will always remain.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm really, I'm really glad that Ms. Cummings so eloquently brought up the passing of a hallmark in this community and how much of an impact was made. And I could not echo more strongly the comments that were made and how valuable and significant that legacy will be for many, many years to come in so many different aspects across this community and beyond.
Further concerns or comments? I am probably remiss for not having done this sooner. I will echo what the two of you have just said. Willie Brown was a citizen of the town of Normal in his heart and did so much for this community his entire, his entire life. And I think we should take a moment of silence in honor of that man.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.